All right, good morning and welcome to the May 4 Trinity County Board of Supervisors meeting. If you need assistance with Zoom, please go to the Zoom website. The chat function on Zoom is not in appropriate form for questions or comments. It is only for technical issues and public comment given via Zoom should be done by raising your hand and using the chat function as a request. Having said that, I will ask Supervisor Gogan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the why of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before we go into closed session, item 1.1, we are going to jump ahead to the presentations, Sheriff, item 2.3. That is our intro music to this wonderful proclamation. And I will be adopting a proclamation, recognizing Corporal Ronald Hanover upon his retirement. And I will read that now. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity recognizing the retirement of Corporal Ronald R. Hanover. Whereas on August 24th, 1997, Ron Hanover began his career with the Trinity County Sheriff's Office as a deputy, a reserve deputy, and whereas having performed his duties as a reserve deputy in excellent manner, was promoted to a full-time deputy sheriff on May 1st, 1998. And whereas during his career with the Sheriff's Office, he served in a variety of assignments to include patrol, code enforcement, field training officer, SWAT, rifle marksmanship, and sniper, crisis intervention, and weaponless defense instructor. And whereas having performed his duties in an excellent manner, was promoted to the rank Corporal on March 14th, 2013. And whereas Ron was assigned as a field training officer, he was instrumental in the training of numerous new officers. Ron led by example, which earned him the respect of all he worked with, inspired his trainees to do better, be better. He was respected by fellow deputies for being a great partner who they always knew had their back. And whereas Ron was known for going above and beyond the necessary, his leadership ability and positive attitude was always apparent. Ron has been commended on numerous occasions for his timely response courtesy and that he truly exemplified public service, one time having responded from home, showing up in his logging boots and shorts. And whereas Ron has long been an asset to the Sheriff's Office, his knowledge of the Trinity County geography and its residents is insurmountable. As a member of the Sheriff's Office, he was dependable and hardworking, always going out of his way to assist and serve his community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity commends Ronald R. Hanover for his 23 years and eight months of dedicated service to the County of Trinity and hereby wish him the most happy and healthy retirement as of May 1st, 2021. Duly passed and adopted this fourth day of May 2021 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Congratulations. All right, here you go. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. Can we get a photo? Does someone have the ability to take a picture? Richard?
I have the camera.
Would the other supervisors like to join the photo?
I would love to.
All right. Let's go by the eagle here.
It was fun, but I'm glad it's over.
I move to adopt the resolution presented.
All right, we have the motion by Supervisor Groves and a second by Supervisor Cox. Emma, please hold the board.
Supervisor Cox, have you voted? Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
All right.
Thank you.
Supervisor Brown, I would have something to say.
Please.
Ron, I want to thank you. I probably had more interaction with you than anybody because of your hard work in code enforcement. And you really, you started the code enforcement basically and designed how everything was working. And so it was a valuable thing that you did for the county there. And I really truly appreciate your work that you did in that and your thoughtfulness in that program during some tougher times in the county than we're facing today. So thank you very much and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. May I also just like to add that I had a distinct honor of working with Ron with three different agencies over the last 20-plus years, with Highway Control and Marshal's Office and now the Sheriff's Office. And I just got to say it was, it was great working with Ron. I remember over 20 years ago first seeing him walking into the CHP office, wearing his green pickle suit. And it's just been great. It's been wonderful working with him. And I hope he has a great, wonderful, long, happy, and prosperous retirement with the Congress, and I hope they have a great time. So thanks, Ron. And I appreciate it. So thank you.
Unless there are notes, you'd like to say anything? Appreciate you coming in and enjoy your, your free time.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we are going to go into closed session for item 1.1, Government Code Section 54954.5F, Conference with Labor Negotiators, County's Designated Representatives, Sophia Meyer and Shelley Nelson, Employee Organizations, Deputy Sheriff's Association, probation peace officers association, and skilled trade units. We will return from closed session. Any estimates on that?
About how far, one give or take, probably take?
All right. Thank you. Let's go with, we'll return at 9:45 for the rest of the board meeting and public comment. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Do we have any public comment on this item? Anybody out there? Thank you.
I don't think there's public comment on this item, and you have public comment on the general agenda when we retire. Thank you.
All right, apologize for the delay. I'm not getting back at 9:45. Please mute your phones out there. We are going to come back into the board meeting with public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda.
Supervisor Brown, would you like me to report out the closed session at the conclusion of the meeting?
Of the one we just had?
Or if we have another closed session at the end of the meeting, I can report out problem three after that if you prefer.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. So I know, I don't know if you guys are here to make public comment or not, but as far as the Lewiston item, as you can see from the information there, the item will be pulled due to new information that's been received. So the hearing will not be happening. And that, that memo there should be pretty self-explanatory as to why.
May I speak to that?
Yeah, of course.
I'm counsel for the Chris Lewiston, the appellant. And I am curious as to what the intended impact of that is. So does this mean that the present operator has no license to operate and will be expected to cease operation and for the terms of SABI family forms permit, remove the equipment and facilities that are present from the site?
I'm not, I'm not able to speak on the specifics, but if you look at the memorandum that was turned in subsequent to the board agenda, I believe the last sentence is, quote unquote, "I withdraw my approval of CCL number 435..." The appeal is moot. So that should answer all the questions that are pertinent for now. As far as the details about that, I'm not in a position to state that, but I just didn't want you guys to waste your time by waiting until the end. Yes?
Just, I don't know if it's a typo, but the last number is not matching the CCL number. Just want to make sure.
It's probably just a typo.
Yeah, that's what I figured. I just wanted to confirm.
Okay. All right, so with that, we will open up for public comment. Go ahead, John Brower.
Good morning, supervisors. John Brower from Junction City. And speaking to the last meeting item where Supervisor Frazier is encouraging the board to adopt owner-built, low-density rural housing building code that's, that's available through the state now, the state has adopted, made it an option. Many counties around us have adopted it successfully. It seems very appropriate for, definitely for parts of Trinity County. It does seem to be threatening to the North Lake area and so I want to encourage this board to please adopt this alternative building code that is designed for rural areas of California with low housing density as soon as possible. It's, it's very, very good fit for southern part of the county and down river and especially where we've had these catastrophic fires. So perhaps to make it less threatening to, to the parts of the county that want to retain a more, more of a country club type atmosphere, there could be opt-out zones. Opt-out zones have worked well for cannabis. Or perhaps there could be a pilot program that would focus on the, the areas of these fire footprints, like the Helena Fire and the August complex, which was the largest fire in California history last year. And try to offer these residents, especially in South County, some path forward. And as a safety matter for future large fire events, it would be great if the, this housing, especially in South County, was permitted and, and the fire departments and police new warehouses were and, and the county was benefiting from property taxes being paid on those properties and, and people wouldn't have to hide their, their house from the county. I think participation in this program definitely be a benefit to most of the county. So thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Emma, is there anyone on the Zoom function with their hand raised for public comment? Yes.
Yes, we have Adrian Geez.
All right. Hey, thank you. Good morning. Adrian Geez from G4 here. See, I just want to go back to the last meeting also for a moment and ask just for clarity if the equity assessment piece was actually read. That meeting got so complex and so long that maybe I just missed it, maybe it got, it just kind of fell off the table, but I would encourage if it hasn't been read to, please do put that on a future agenda and accept the money so we can begin the equity assessment process. I know the staff probably isn't really feeling like having to come up with yet another ordinance, but the assessment process itself generally takes, you know, six months to a year for the interviews to be conducted, information to be gathered, and ultimately a conclusion to be made. And so it would be great to be able to get that ball rolling. That equity assessment money could go a long ways in Trinity County to addressing some of the legacy environmental issues that many of our neighborhoods suffer from as far as, you know, poorly installed culverts and, and, you know, poor road geometry and a lot of those things that ultimately are a requirement to the cannabis program and this money is intended to directly address those issues. Along with other, it could be used in many ways depending on how the county drafts an ordinance, but it does have a tremendous value and a long-term value for the county. And receiving the money now so we can get that assessment rolling would be great. So maybe next year we could get into an actual ordinance. And I would also like to support the owner-built, low-density rural dwelling ordinance. And I think that the idea of a, of a pilot project in the South County is a really efficient way to start looking at this. Just shortly ago, Siskiyou County adopted Class K as a pilot project to help out some of their folks that suffered really badly in the fires last year. It wasn't the August complex, I can't remember the name of it, it was Slatter Fire or something. I think of my ApeCam. But there's, there's language there that could be borrowed. It's, it's been approved in Siskiyou County specifically for rebuilding after this, after their fire. So I do hope when, when the time comes and we have the capacity that we can get, get a pilot project rolling for the folks in South County. And honestly, I hadn't considered Junction City previously, but that's probably a good place also. And that's it for me today. Thank you very much.
Adrian, I believe that the equity grant money had been awarded at least two weeks ago, maybe even the meeting before that. That is my recollection. Yes, correct. So the, I believe the HSU group or whatever has begun that process. Emma, anybody else on Zoom function?
Yes, Jeff Goodella.
Hi, Jeff Goodella, Xenia. Class K buildings just makes perfect sense in South County, not just because of the fire and not just because the price of lumber is skyrocketing and making it prohibitive to actually rebuildings, but it's just kind of always made sense in these extra rural People are not going to rebuild in groups in Ketten Palm and Petten Shaw and Xenia. The forest is toast. It's not as beautiful as it used to be. I think the county needs to do everything they can to promote the rebuilding of these areas for so many reasons, the tax pay, letting people enjoy the South County, the lake. It just makes perfect sense down here and I would appreciate if you guys would enter it to allow it. I know Commissioner Frazier's been pushing for this for a while and it makes so much sense, it's unbelievable that it hasn't become, gotten before the board yet. These are not hippie shack, these are not peepies we're talking about. They're just relaxed building codes that make practical sense. And all building codes don't make practical sense, especially out in groups, out in these very rural areas. You know, people can cut their own lumber, people can build in a way that maybe doesn't need quite the engineering, but still be safe. And just please, please let this happen. It's, it's well overdue and it works in, in other counties around us. Secondly, I'd like to ask the board if, or just tell the board that I think, I think Trinity County is not being represented well in the lawsuit with PAA. Derek Cole has not fought for this the way he should be. The way he interpreted is not the way CDFA interprets the regulations. And Trinity County should really seek counsel or at least a second opinion from a counsel that is a little more up to speed with CDFA regulations and is willing to consult CDFA and use their help. Because every other county is dealing with the same thing and none of us, none of them are having this problem. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Emma, anybody else on Zoom?
I have no one else on Zoom. Is there anyone else in the lobby with public comment?
This is on a unrelated topic, so forget I'm wearing the orange shirt. I noticed in perusing the, the memo that you all signed several years ago about a rules and governance for the board. I don't know if you know which, it's on your homepage for the Board of Supervisors called the Resolution of the Board for the County of Trinity Adopting Amendments to the Trinity County Governance Manual. And when I was looking it over, it was only signed by three out of the five Board of Supervisors at the time. I'm just wondering if there is a plan to revisit because it just, I found it curious that not all five supervisors signed on to it.
Was that the 23rd vice, vice chairman? Was it the most recent one?
Yeah, it's the one that's on your webpage. There's a link to it on the Board of Supervisors.
I believe only three signed on because three had only voted for it. Was that?
There were no's. Two no's and none absent, none abstaining, none refused. So there were two no's against it, and I'm just curious why something that governs the board wouldn't be unanimous with the existing board.
I would suggest watching the video from that board meeting. The discussion would be valuable.
Okay, I will go back and revisit that. Thank you.
Can I get your names from the record?
Oh, Nancy Anderson.
Thank you.
Check the public comment? I'm going to jump in front of you then I can get you back up there to listen to you. Thanks.
Good morning. So public comment came in to me from Chris Losi, and he is the District Ranger for the South Fork Management Unit. He wanted to be here to present himself, but had to leave by 9:30 in order to be in the South County on time, and so asked me to give this for him. He states, "My reason for attending, wanting to attend today's meeting was not to talk about fire recovery, although lots of great things are progressing. Rather, I wanted to discuss some work we're doing to clean up some illegal dump sites across the South Fork Management Unit. On Tuesday, May 25th, we are planning a district cleanup day that will work on cleaning up the two largest illegal dump sites on Forest Service land. These sites are next to the community of Trinity Pines. We expect about 50 people to assist with cleanup, at least 30 Forest Service and 20 community members and some county employees as well. One of the residents of Trinity Pines has offered to cook long food for the cleanup group. Forest Service employees have been authorized to use their work time to participate in the cleanup. We also have a small cleanup budget. The cleanup fund will be used primarily to rent dumpsters that we will place on-site and then dump the material at the dump. We are working closely with Trinity County Environmental Health to secure these dumpsters and ensure that we can dump the material at the hipper transfer station. Any assistance that the county can provide in the way of reduced dump fees would be greatly appreciated. For example, if community members use their pickup trucks to transfer material, we would ask that they not be charged. I will have more information on the specifics of this effort at the next Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to request time for law enforcement for one of my representatives to speak about this on your Tuesday, May 18th meeting." Chris Losi, District Ranger.
All right, next one.
My name is Bill Burton. I still work with you guys. Pete?
Hey, Bill.
Since I heard a lot about Class K and my planning commissioner worked really hard on it, Richard worked on it, and I think it's a very relevant, useful method to, to form into a fire-resistant building. I don't know how much can be included in the Class K on that, but, but masonry construction that is more fire-resistant for the next 100 years could also be included in the discussion of Class K. I just saved some houses in a fire down in Santa Cruz and being in the fire, noticing that the fire, if it's not a crown fire, if it's a ground fire, it's moving through. The masonry buildings and the masonry bottom stories was saving houses and people could feel safe not leaving their homes if they had an escape place within their home or lots of masonry, small structures or pump houses or places to, to actually hide in during a fire event. So all these things could be included into a better building that doesn't burn as much. You've got to admit that our standard bit, building with all the wood is, is just not going to be safe enough. So it's very relevant to advance this discussion of the Class K with, with decent masonry allowances. I can imagine straw bale with the stuccoing on the outside also is preventative. And let the planning commission move this forward and our county will get some really high-quality building in there and we'll, we'll see through these fires also which ones last 50 years or, or, you know. So it's, it's a good move for us to go into. Thanks, Matt. Good to see you all.
Thanks for your comments. Is there any more public comment?
I have no other public comment on Zoom, and I'm not seeing any public comment from the lobby.
All right. With that, we will move into Presentations, Behavior Health Services, item 2.1, Adopt a Proclamation which recognizes May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month, no fiscal impact. Connie, are you on the Zoom?
I'm on Zoom. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Do you have the PowerPoint?
Yes, I'm holding it up now.
Okay, thanks. I have just a short presentation for you this morning, highlighting our successful proclamation recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month. It is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, and it provides us with an opportunity to think about and acknowledge the importance of mental health and well-being, to think about the prejudices and misconceptions about mental illness, to think about stigma that prevents people from seeking treatments, and that mental wellness and recovery is impossible. I'll go ahead and wait for the first slide. That's kind of our first slide, but I may be able to share my screen if that's helpful.
I've got it now. Thank you.
Great. We can go to the second slide or the third slide, please. So one in five people will experience a mental illness in their lifetime, and everyone faces challenges in their lives that can impact their mental health. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic during last year, the number of people experiencing a mental health crisis or another illness has increased dramatically. In the member of 2020, the CDC reported that 44% of Americans were dealing with either depression or anxiety. So with that in mind, it's imperative to support and promote now health care in every community in order to realize stability and recovery from mental illness. Serious mental illness is defined as the mental, behavioral, or emotional disorder resulting in serious functional impairment which substantially interferes with or limits one or more major life activities. Here we have some statistics. One in five adults in the United States experience mental illness every year. One in 20 adults in the United States experiences serious mental illness every year. One in six youth in the United States experience a mental disorder every year. 50% of all lifetime mental illness begins by age 14, and 75% of all lifetime mental illness begins by age 24. illness begins by age 24. And then finally, suicide is the second leading cause of death by people aged 10 to 34 years. In closing, we are here to help. These are the contact numbers for Mental Health Help in Trinity County. We have our main clinic number, the 24/7 crisis line number. We also have a toll-free number, and then finally, the National Suicide Prevention Department number available for. So, thank you for letting me bring mental health and May is Mental Health Awareness Month to the board this morning.
Thank you, Connie. We appreciate your time and all that you do with the county. Thank you. Do we need a motion on the proclamation?
Yes.
All right. How to entertain a motion?
So moved. And I have a question. Is there public comment? It should be yours on proclamation.
Yes, you can open up a public comment. Take an action on it.
All right, is there any public comment on this item?
We have a motion. We need a second, please. Thank you.
Motion from Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Cox, have you vote? Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you much for passing, honestly. Next item, Trinity County Transportation Commission. Are we doing the addendum first or second after 2.2?
So, the addendum is not properly agendized. It should be under Transportation Commission, so that item needs to be re-agendized for a different meeting.
Okay. I apologize. All right, Item 2.2. Receive a presentation from Caltrans Project Manager Kelly Timmons on District 2's 2021 Trinity County Construction Report.
Morning, Rick Tippett, Director of Transportation. Annually, we have Caltrans come in and give us an update of the projects that are going on on state highway system, and then some that we are working cooperatively with on the state highway system. You're all probably familiar with the famous summer map of what the construction will be this summer, and Kelly brought in the map, and I'll turn it over to him and let him explain what's going on. But just real quick, Kelly Timmons is the Kirk Birkenpaws?
Clint Birkenpass.
Yeah, Clint Birkenpass, or Steve Rogers that we used to work with. He's now our representative for Trinity County and helps us coordinate projects on the state highway system.
I'd like to provide a larger map. I don't know if you've seen those, plus my business card.
Kelly gives it to him.
There you go. All right.
I just do want to note that my office number on my business card is no longer in use. Since we've started teleworking, we've tried to cut down on our office equipment, but my cellphone still works. They haven't cut that off yet. I'd like to just start out by introducing myself, and I'm very happy to be the project manager for Trinity County representing Caltrans. I started traveling across Trinity County when I was three years old when a couple of my uncles moved to Eureka, and I was living with my family in Redding still, and I made that trip probably two or three times a year growing up at least, and this is back in 1973 when I started making that trip across 299. At the time I was in college, I spent two summers working for a construction company down in southern Trinity County. I spent two summers working on realigning the grade from South Fork Mountain down to Mad River. And more recently, I had the opportunity to move back over to Shasta County from Eureka. I spent quite a few years working at Caltrans in Eureka, and I still work in Eureka, so I was making that commute two or three times a month during the time that we had the Big French Creek slide, road closures, as well as Junction City Fire. And so, I'm very aware of the conditions of the highway here in Trinity County and the pains and the sufferings that the community citizens experience, because I've been part of that pretty much my whole life, traveling back and forth and building roads and being just a community citizen using the roads. I'd like to go through, just starting with the, if you turn the maps over to the second page, the back page, is a list of the projects in the orange light, which is the construction that's happening this year currently through this next season. The aqua blue are projects that are in either the environmental or design phase before it goes out to construction, and then the purple are projects that are still being programmed, and they haven't yet started work on them. And so, most of these projects that are in construction right now are COVID jobs and/or worker safety projects, and then also there's some environmental emergency jobs. Being that this is the first time I've presented, I don't know if you want me to go through each one of them, or if you have just questions about the ones that are being built right now. I do want to point out that there are some STIP projects that are coming up that are in the design phase or in the programming phase. I'm working closely with Rick Tippett on combining STIP money with our SHOP projects. Those would be in the design process right now is the Downriver Turnouts that we'll be constructing in another year or so, providing turnout in both directions, just west of Deloma or east of Deloma. And then in the programming, we do have a Burt Ranch CAPM is a SHOP project where we're trying to combine, we will be combining a left turn lane to School Road off of 299. And we're also looking at combining some local funds on Dingle Blue to improve an intersection.
All right, let's start this meeting. Good morning, welcome to the April 20th Board of Supervisors meeting for Trinity County.
Working together.
For Zoom users, please, the chat function is only-
It was executed recently to provide inspection, Caltrans inspectors for electrical work on the Nats Gulch intersection here in town in Weaverville. So, I guess, is there any questions on any of the particular projects that we have coming up in construction right now or in the future?
Supervisors, looky. So, the Swift Creek Bridge replacement, here on your project, you show that as a four-year project. Is that?
Well, so the end date is January 2025, and so probably would, you know, we're expecting most of the work to be done by the finish of the season of 2024. There may be some cleanup work and finalized in some paperwork there at the very end that would read out to January, but it's not going to go through the year of 2025.
So, what construction will be done this year?
You know, I'd have to talk to the construction engineer. I'm not sure exactly how much they'll be able to get done. You know, it's starting in May, and so with that being, you know, just starting this month, they'll get some of it done, but I don't imagine a lot of it's going to get done, you know, compared to the whole project. Did you have any particular, like?
Well, the concern is, you know, I don't know how much traffic delay we're going to have in that, and so looking at three years of traffic delay would be a little worrisome to me. I know it's a big project, and there's a lot of dirt material.
Right. Just to let people know, you know, and I didn't clarify this earlier, is I just became the project manager this last year for Trinity County, and if you look at the project managers that are listed for the construction, a lot of them are other project managers, and that's because it was so close to starting construction, it was more efficient to keep them as the project managers, and I'll have to get back to you on that one. If you want me to, I could give a little bit more information on how much work is being done this year versus the other years, and what the traffic management plan is for that project in particular.
That would be wonderful, if you could get back and just, you know, just year by year what the plan is. Doesn't have to be terribly dense, but I have a lot of people constituents who are going to be really concerned about that project.
No, that's fine. That's perfectly good. Do you want me to just work through Rick Tippett then?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Any questions? I think that's good. No more questions.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. If you do have any questions in the future, you can always give me a call, and I'd be happy to work with you. Thank you.
Now, we will go into the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Are there any items wishing to be pulled by the board?
I have one item that I think needs to be fixed. Item 3.8 says we're approving the regular minutes of May 6th meeting, and it should say April and April 20th, not May.
Nice. Anything else? I would like to pull 3.12. It's just out of curiosity. Is that okay? Rick, will you be able to explain that one?
All right.
Thanks. And with the typo on 3.8, does it actually need to be looked at separately, or is that typo just able to be addressed?
You can just correct that with the approval of the minutes, and then as a calendar as amended item.
Okay. So, it's just Item 3.12 then being pulled. Are there any members of the public wishing to pull an item? All right, hearing done. How to entertain a motion on the consent calendar?
I'd move to accept the consent calendar with one amendment, and that's to Item 3.8, changing the date from May 20th to April 20th.
Okay, and then you're fine with the, okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right, have a motion by Supervisor Groves, the second by Supervisor Frazier. Emma, please pull the board.
Supervisor Frazier, have you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. So, Rick, can you tell us about Item 3.12, please?
Okay. For many years, there's been the PG&E Rural 28 program, which allows for, it's essentially they collect a fee or tax on utility bills for customers in the PG&E area, a rate-paying area, and allows for undergrounding of utilities, particularly with a focus in communities. And so, we have been collecting, at one time we had had a pot of over a million dollars to do undergrounding projects. We had proposed a couple undergrounding projects many years ago, some even before my time. One was proposed out of Van Duzen. Part of the problem is, is a lot of the times you have to collect, you have to connect into houses that are not set up for that type of undergrounding. Those projects can end up burning thousands of dollars for the homeowners. So, none of the projects were very popular, I would say, and we did not have success in looking at communities to underground. So, what we did was, maybe about 10 years ago now, we approached Caltrans, or PG&E, about undergrounding some utilities across roadways, like for instance, through seniors. So, when there was a snowstorm and the PG&E line dropped, it would, if it was undergrounded across the road, then it wouldn't drop onto the road and wouldn't have the problems that we run into occasionally, that we do now. And they turned us down on that proposal. So, essentially, what we did was, we had a million dollars in the bank, and a lot of the communities have also, a lot of other communities have this problem. And so, these communities that haven't been able to exchange their dollars have taken to some or credits to counties or cities that do need the money for projects that they have ongoing, and we can usually get 50 cents on, well, a lot of them have been doing 25 cents on the dollar, but I insisted we go 50 cents on the dollar. And the first one we had sold to was Pinole. We had sold over half of our credits about three years back, and it goes into the general fund. Los Altos approached us the other day about some remainder. Now, in the interim, the CPUC has not been very thrilled about counties and cities selling their Rural 20 money. They would rather take it from one community and give it to the other, and so they are meeting on Friday to not allow this process anymore. So, what we're doing is we're getting it in just in time to make sure that we can get that done. So, with that, I can answer any questions.
No, that was super thorough for me at least. Any other questions from the board? All right, appreciate it, Rick. Thank you. All right. Now, we will go into our slightly different.
Tonight.
Sorry about that.
Public comment, too.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I have no on Zoom.
All right. Let's entertain a motion.
So moved, and I will have a comment after.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion? All seconds of motion. We have a motion and a second. Supervisor Groves, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think in the spirit of previous South County supervisor, always asked for, since it's South County and Downriver where this money comes, is supposed to go to through the PG&E, is that there be deference for that money that's even in the general fund to have extra look at to go to those areas where PG&E is.
All right, with those pot holes fixed. All right, any additional comments or discussion? Emma, please pull the board.
Motion by Supervisor Groves, second by Supervisor Brown. Supervisor Brown, have you vote?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes. Next, we'll go into Grants. Item 4.1, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution authorizing an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, CTVG-CB-2M3 Program for Coronavirus Response Rounds 2 and 3, no impact to the general fund, funds in the amount of $300 and $1,000. No impact to the general fund, funds in the amount of $370,816 in COVID response may be awarded to the grants department. Imagine Susie is on, there you are.
Yes, I'm learning on the board and public. I'm going to speak to you once again about my favorite topic, CDBG funding. I came to you today for the third time on this particular topic. Late last week, the hospital, which if you recall from two weeks ago, I was here presenting a different resolution on the same funding. We were going to potentially fund a transportation vehicle for the hospital to use to transport eligible COVID patients or susceptible or vulnerable patients. And since that time, we have learned that the hospital had a little bit of a miscommunication and are therefore not wanting to move forward with that application. Having a conversation with the CEO, we determined the next best course of action was to potentially apply for some economic development business assistance funding in the form of grants, which is eligible through CDBG-CB. It's not eligible through any other CDBG funding. So we are going to switch gears a little bit and commit that funding that was going to be used for a transportation vehicle for the hospital, for a business assistance, direct financial assistance to for-profit businesses. The amount of the application is $95,000, so a piece of that $370,816. In addition, we are asking for permission to use $55,000 of our CDBG program income funding to attach to that business assistance program, making it $150,000 eligible for grants. And with your permission, we would like to submit all three of these applications on Friday and hopefully get contracts turned around rather quickly. David's looking into expediting these funds, get them out to the community faster. So I will entertain any questions and looking for input from the general public on these three potential proposals.
All right, thank you, Susie. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the CEO to see if I heard her participate. Is this money's going to be allocated as like the last monies?
No, I believe, and Susie can correct, but I believe this will be on an application basis. It won't be on just divided funding up and allocated out to local businesses. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, Susie, but I believe it's on an application basis.
Yes, because the CDBG-CB funding has to meet a national objective of serving low to moderate income households. So not everybody will be eligible for the funding. So yes, that will be an application that will determine.
Just for clarification, since it's an application process and I don't know if my business qualifies or not, I will stay and not recuse myself.
Any additional questions from the board?
Susie, just help me out because I missed one portion. You said that there were three different applications you're submitting. I got direct assistance of $95,000 and $55,000 in grants. What's the third part?
Well, the $55,000 from program income is going to be part of the economic development business assistance application. That's one in and of itself. Another one, and the biggest component of that money is the emergency shelter housing. So we are going to be granting of the sub recipients some funding to Human Response Network to replace their travel trailers that they're using for emergency shelters. And we're going to be purchasing tiny homes or single wide mobile homes to replace those travel trailers, which are not meant for long-term living. And then the third one is purchasing a COVID-hardened transportation vehicle for behavioral health to transport their clients and protect the driver from the patient with respect to, you know, COVID and.
Got it. Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Emma, is there any public comment on Zoom on this item?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Unless there is any additional questions, could entertain a motion.
So this is actually a public hearing? Did you open that public hearing? Did I miss that?
I announced it.
Okay.
Is there any comment on there? We're good.
No, we're good. Thank you.
All right. Entertained a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution.
Second then.
First time I got a motion from Supervisor Cox and a second.
Supervisor Gogan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Supervisor Cox?
Yes.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the resolution has been adopted. We will go into reports and announcements next. Item 5.1, reports from department heads. Are there any department heads wishing to report? Mr. Tippett, let's start with you.
Rick Tippett, Director of Transportation. I just wanted to report out that Mr. Timmons had mentioned the signal at Landscult and 299 is coming along. The contractor, right now what we're trying to do is get the contractor and Caltrans to settle on a date, and appears that they've settled on the date of beginning in July to do a lot of the undergrounding. And I asked them to wait just a little bit until after the summer rush to stand the poles and turn on the signal. So it's a little bit later than I expected. I was hoping to have it in late spring, but it looks like it's going to be early summer to midsummer construction. I'll keep you informed as we go along, but I am still bringing the item next meeting to talk about the money end of it, to make sure that we have everything set to go completely all the way through construction and bring the project to an end. Speaking of projects that are coming to an end, the jail is on its final week of significant construction. Matter of fact, it's all down to hanging the blinds yesterday, which was what they were doing. But everything out there is pretty much ready to go. What we have is we have a building show right now, and we have to get the state fire marshal to accept the improvements. And the first meeting is on May 13th, and they're going to schedule what the fire marshal do after that. It'll probably be for the last two weeks, going through dampeners and the fire systems and the alarms. And then once he says it's okay, then they turn the building over to the county. And we already have a garage full of stuff that's going to go in there and pleasant sack and ready. We've got a warehouse full of furniture that's supposed to go in there, mattresses and all kinds of stuff. So we'll be outfitting the jail first part of June, and then I'll turn it over to the sheriff, and he's going to start the training and get everything wrapped up so that we can get it up and operating. But beautiful building, and we're really almost done, almost there. So it's quite exciting. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have constituents who are pretty concerned about the Landscult 299 project and seeing that it looks like it's going to start happening when traffic is at its highest and liability is concerned. But is there no way that Caltrans would consider an earlier date?
The problem is coordinating, there's both the contractor and Caltrans have many projects that are going on. And so it's trying to get them to coordinate to the exact date. And so one of the things that, a lot of the work that they're doing is not work that's necessary to disrupt up to the mainline traffic. Most, about 80 to 90% of the work that goes on for a traffic signal, the people don't see it because it's behind the curb, putting in the common pole wires, setting up things. The only two disruptions that, or three disruptions that we'll have is when we go to grind the pavement. First one would be to set the loops. We have to cut loops in the middle of road, and they just do one lane, then we will kind of around and get it done. And then the next one is stand in the poles, and really they only have to close the traffic for just a little bit to put the pole up and bolt it in, and it's just in that particular direction. Usually never more than five minutes. And then, and then the other, probably the biggest one would be, as I mentioned, grinding pavement, but they repave it and restripe it, and that's probably the biggest disruption. And I asked them to try to focus those disruption dates outside of the summer travel, the busiest part of the travel season, so.
Any additional questions?
Yes, I have two. One is a follow-up, Supervisor Cox question. So I'm a little confused. You said you're going to do those out of the traffic season, so will those be done in September or October?
Inter, I'm trying to get some of them done, the preliminary work before we hit July 4th weekend, and then the rest of it would be after school starts around the middle of August.
Okay. Then a follow-up on a totally different subject. On Blue Mountain East Side Road, there's, the Forest Service has brushing crews that are doing, it looks like a 50-foot clearing on the county road. They're doing it on private property within the right-of-way, but they're not doing it on SPI property. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know anything about it. I do know that SPI is doing a lot of work, so they, in coordination with the road department, Ronnie Hanover, our superintendent, is going to be doing some grading work on East Side Road to bring material in, to rebuild the surface on the top ridge part of the road. But I'm not familiar with the stuff that's going on.
I will say, maybe you should ask about this because they must have at least 500 piles in that right-of-way between, on the paved part, and I don't know how far they're going, but it's quite a project that's going on there.
Yeah, it might be timely because one of the things that we were looking at earlier was working with solid ways to get a tow grinder and to grind up that material into compostable or stuff that, wood chips for better words. And you can move them into, be used for mitigations or, you know, even the private property owners that are interested in grabbing some, might be made available to them.
These look like burn piles, Rick.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I'll follow up on it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? No? All right, thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Are there any other department heads wishing to report out on Zoom?
I'm not seeing any.
All right. Item two, report from county administrator.
The only thing I have to report is pleased to announce I see he's in the audience and didn't know he was going to be here, but Michael has been promoted to our, what do we call you, Chief Information and Social Media Officer?
Chief Information and Social Media Officer.
Yes, he's been promoted to that position. Met with him, excited to have him in that position and look forward to some of the things that we're bringing forward to the board. He has some innovative ideas to help protect us from cyber attacks and to continue to move us into the technology future. So I just want to welcome Michael and say thank you for accepting the position.
Congratulations, Mike. All right. Reports from Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Fraser, Sergeant Do.
All right. I attended a CGT cap meeting, I believe last Wednesday. Not a lot to report about it. One of the issues we discussed was the five biggest concerns for the county, most of them were, all three counties were the same five things, scrambled differently. In Trinity County, it was affordable housing, mental health, substance use disorders, income instability, and education and training were the things, the largest concern for community action. CAP board member training on Tuesday, June 8th, I'm going to try to attend. And then Trinity County Office of Education was awarded $15,000 grant for mosaic system, and the Human Response Network was awarded $60,000 for shelter and for parent education and life skills employment searches to help people in that. And also there's LIHE funding available. If you know people who are in need of that, that would be energy assistance, including the WPO system, which is wood, propane, and oil. So that stuff is available. LIHE, that's all I have to report for now.
Supervisor Gogan?
Same meeting as Dan. I was also at the ESA II meeting discussing the possibility of someone here in our county taking over that food program for the Weaverville area. And then myself, Jill, and Dr. Kuntz were at a NorCal EMS meeting, but I'm on fairly well, and hopefully we set a good example as a county for helping them out in their bid to get some extra money.
All right. I don't really have much to report out on the last two weeks. Supervisor Cox and I are exchanging our NICO and SKED committees with each other, and that is about it.
Supervisor Cox?
I have several things. First off, the town hall is next Monday night, and our speaker will be our local district ranger, Tara Jones. She's got bullet points that you can check out either in the Trinity Journal or on the website. She's the lead on the August recovery, and so Chris Losi will be on the call as well so that he can answer specific questions. So that's a great opportunity. And you're, of course, welcome to jump on that meeting if you, maybe you live in the South County and want to hear what they have to say, you're more than welcome, and the link is on the website or in the journal. Fire Save Council is doing some great things all month long, so it's Wildfire Awareness Month. And so the Fire Save Council is putting out media every day for wildfire preparedness, including defensible space, which is this week, home hardening, week two, emergency preparedness, week three, and prescribed burning educational materials on week four, BLM. CalFire, the Del Norte unit of Humboldt CalFire are also sharing really good media this month related to wildfire preparedness. So if you're not on social media, but you have an email account, Amelia Flights is summarizing that material weekly and emailing them out. And so if you would like to be on her email list, you can find her email on the Trinity County Fire Save Council website. Also, really important, this is a great opportunity, the RCD and the Watershed Resource Training Center are providing free community shipping in Weaverville to residents this week, so you can just call Chris or Dylan to get scheduled for that. There will be likely some extra money to continue into next week as well. And then the RCD is looking to hire crew members for the fuel reduction crew. And so you can stop in and pick up an application if you're interested in that. The crews will run into around December 15th. And then the last thing that I have is that I was on the RCRC meeting for Supervisor Brown this week, as he could not attend. And one of the things that's really important there is that the Board of Forestry has updated their regulations, which have the potential for some really significant impact to rural counties. So the RCRC has put their comments into, we're in the 45-day comment period for those. And this closes, well, the comment period technically, the 45 days closes before the hearing date of June 22nd, but the word is that they will continue to receive those comments right up to the hearing date. And so if you would like to express your concerns in writing, now is the time to take that.
All right. And last but not least, Supervisor Hoops.
Thank you, Chair. It was a busy couple of weeks for me. We had the CSAC conference, a two-day conference, which I. We had the CSAC conference, a two-day conference, which I gave a lot of the highlights, especially the stuff to rural areas, the concerns there is the fire, all the fire legislation going through, and a big concern to the rural counties in CSAC. Then we did have a LAFCO meeting here that I attended, which was working on the sphere of influence for T-PUD. We had a phone call with Senator McGuire's staff, which was very interesting on SB 12, which is the senator's version of trying to do some fire safe work in the state of California. Let's see, we had five from the county, is that right, Richard, and Lisa from Planning, and me, and Ms. Cox, and Rick were on there. They, we gave them a fairly negative viewpoint of SB 12. The, the defense in this, which is, I respect Senator McGuire's work on this, his defense of having this bill is that it's gonna be better than all the draconian actions that the state may take, and so this slows that process down and puts a, in my view, a pretty big burden on the county, but at least we won't have burdensome rules right away. So we made our feelings very strongly about that this is designed for bigger counties and bigger subdivisions. Their smallest line is one house to, basically what they wanna do is they have three levels of rules that you'll have to go, and so the bottom line is, is one through eight houses, and I pointed out to them that Trinity County hasn't had an eight-house subdivision in, at least in my tenure in the county, so that's over 21 years that we haven't had that, and I believe the number's probably closer to 30 years, and so that even their smallest level is way bigger than what we deal with. So they are going to take that back and discuss it with the senator, and we'll see what happens there. Also, the news that came out of that, and also came out of CSAC, was that SB 55, which was the very draconian rule, basically would stop all development in Trinity County, is dead as of now, and so that's, that's good news for the county. And then also, we had an airport commission meeting for the first time in a long time, and so that's good that we're getting back on those, and of course, the airports have been neglected for quite a while, and there's not much money there, but at least we're thinking about that, and also Supervisor Cox attended that. As many of you may know or don't know, she is a pilot, so, so I guess she flew missions over NOM, I'm not sure what, how that was, but, but, so she has an interest in the airports and developing the airports into a much more viable asset for the county. So I wanna thank Rick for at least get this going, and at some point, we need to, in my view, focus on trying to find more monies to get these airports, like I said, big asset. And so that's, I did wanna reiterate the CDF rules, which are going to be pretty strong and worrisome, that is in the 45-day comment period. And the one last thing is, during McGuire's discussion with his staff that wrote the SB 12, I asked, what effect would this ruling have on K-housing, and they didn't know what K-housing was, and had no understanding of what, if any, effect all these fire rules would have on that. So they were gonna look into that. With that, I am done, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. So next, we can go into county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by a department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Are there any requests from the board? Seeing none, are there any requests from staff? Or public? Emma, anybody out there?
I don't see anybody.
All right, then we will go into Human Resources, item 6.1, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.41. Chair?
I think Director Hunter and David Kolbeck are here to present an update on the department heads.
That's great, that'll be the next item. So, where was I? Pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.410A, authorized hiring applicant numbers 00635 as a community health nurse 2 at range G227, step D in health and human services, public health branch effective May 1st, 2021. Approximate cost and salary benefits per month for a community health nurse 2 at A step is $8,228, and at D step is $9,379. Shelley, you?
I'm through.
All right.
Good morning. Shelley Nelson, HR Director. So, you know, Health and Human Services, the public health branch, they have been running a continuous recruitment since November of 2019, and we've been trying to, you know, fill a vacancy of either a community health nurse or a public health nurse. And to date, we've had only three applicants, two of which had withdrawn over the past year, and currently, we have an applicant who has scored well among the interview panelists, and actually has eight years applicable experience as a registered nurse with an accounting. The applicant has lived in training class for 27 years, dedicating five years as a director of risk management and quality assurance over a critical access hospital, skilled nursing facility, two rural health centers. Additional work experience includes working as a floor nurse and in clinics, and as an R inpatient care coordinator. Prior work experiences given this applicant the opportunity to work with childhood vaccination schedules, the California immunization registry program, working of, I'm sorry, reporting of communicable diseases to the county, preventative medicine, and also, they've been working with the COVID-19 vaccine clinics for Trinity County patients, and this experience well exceeds the minimum qualifications for this classification. It would be a very exciting and tremendous asset to the department and to the community, and we are asking that you approve above A step at D effective May 1st.
All right, thank you, Shelley. Are there any questions from the board? Is there any public comment on this item, Emma?
I'm not seeing any, and it does not look like there's any movement in the lobby.
Okay. Then I entertain a motion.
I will move to accept 6.1 as presented by staff.
All right. All right, Emma, a motion from Supervisor Rhodes and a second from Supervisor Cox, please call the board.
Supervisor Cox, how do you vote? Supervisor Rhodes?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frager?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Shelley. Now going to Planning and Zoting, item 6.2, receive an update on the commercial cannabis program from Director of Building and Planning, Kim Hunter. No fiscal impact, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director. Yes, so a few things to report on this morning, and then I will hand it off to David to report on the framework of the transition plan specifically, and provide to you some further information on how that is proceeding and the content of that plan. First of all, we have 291 valid license extensions issued, more are coming in, these are renewals, these are for cultivation licenses in our commercial cannabis program. We have renewals that are coming up, that were already, the licenses are still, are just coming up for expiration, so we're addressing those renewals with extension letters, reviewing the files as they, as they come up for renewal to their anniversary date, and then, of course, we had, we have a good number of renewals coming in based on the 30-day window of opportunities to submit for those license applications that had expired without renewals or renewal payments or both received. So that's coming along very nicely, we're making good progress in that area. The last day to submit a renewal for expired CCL issued on or after January 1st, 2019, is next Tuesday, that's May 11th. As far as staffing goes, and as we discussed in our last report, there's three components of the transition plan. The first is the framework, which David will report on in a few minutes. The second is outreach and education, and the third is, is of course staffing resources, the ability to, to process applications and, and the environmental documents. So I'm focusing on my efforts on the staffing and the outreach and education. So the outreach and education are, I have been working, discussing concepts with a marketing firm to help us out, so we do a spectacular job when the transition plan rolls out, and everybody knows exactly what's happening, different tools and methods of reaching out, communicating with folks. I touched on that in my previous report, which would include YouTube videos, printed materials, and social media, so we're very excited about that. I will know more and have more substance to discuss next month, the meeting is on May 4th, and that'll be my next update, and I'll have more on the outreach and education component then, because it will be further developed and the concepts farther along. This week, we do, regarding staffing, we do have interviews starting this week for vacant positions. A lot of our recruitments are staggered. The goal is to interview for two different positions, so different sets of interviews for two positions every week, which is very ambitious with our staffing situation at the office, but we need to get those positions filled that are vacant, especially with our administrative support staff, and all positions in the cannabis division that are open, including filling a few of the allocations that you approved in March, I believe. And then, as far as staffing or resources go, still working on finalizing the request for qualifications for consulting firms, that will be posted, and that'll be finalized, it's almost done and posted next week, and we'll get those out to consulting firms and have it posted on our website and wherever possible to get worked out to interested parties. Some issues that we've been hearing about quite a bit in our cannabis division, and the board may be hearing about as well, in fact, it was, one was mentioned this morning, is a huge amount of trash. I believe Supervisor Frager has, has been to areas in, in his district that are just the trash and the amounts of trash, indoor waterways and vacant lands, is just, is just, it's a very bad situation. You know, Kristy Anderson, our environmental health director, is working, working on that, we've discussed it, a portion of that trash, and another concern is just waste management for cannabis material, and that's the plant material, not plastics and other debris, from, just from various sources related to our cannabis cultivation sites. I think the Trinity Pines has been recognized, it's just, there's, there's a lot of issues and areas of concern up there, also with the, the Forest Service. So trash, and then waste management for cannabis material, also working with Kristy on that, we'll be coming back to, hopefully with some, some solutions and ideas, not hopefully, we will be in the future on waste management. And then the other big issue, which will only get worse this year due to our water situation, is we're already seeing water trucks used for cultivation sites. Water trucks are not allowed for cultivation unless there's an emergency situation. Emergency situation is maybe a pump goes out and needs to be replaced, so for a few days, water trucks are used or weak while that pump's being replaced. This is not where you're just, don't have the water type of emergency, that's not considered emergency if your well has gone dry. So that, that language is, people interpret it as different, in different ways, whatever, what is an emergency? I'll be seeking to clarify that through a policy, and I will keep you updated on that, because this is an issue that's only gonna get worse again, as I mentioned throughout this year with our water situation. It's, it's early May, and we're getting many reports of water trucks on roads and delivering water to sites. So with that, I think I've covered everything I am going over today. Do you have any questions for me?
So pertaining to the water, I heard today Siskiyou County is actually filing criminal charges on people that are selling water, and so that may be something that you can look into on their. They have the one subdivision that makes Trinity Pines look really small, I think they have 6,000 illegal old homes there. Anyway, that's, that was just announced today that they were doing that. Of the 290 that you talked about that are renewals, am I to assume all those have state licenses, or they wouldn't be renewed, or is that?
Correct.
That's correct.
We are, we're in close contact with CDFA and checking all of these, and if a state license had not been issued or is close to being issued, is in process, very close, then no extension was granted.
Okay, thank you. And then, what, what Sequel work, if any, is being done on, on those 90, 290? Are we under the urgency ordinance where none has to be done until?
Yes, these are under the urgency ordinance if anyone needs.
And... I can't read my writing for the fourth question, so I bet it wasn't that important, thank you this time.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisors, David Kolbeck, Senior Environmental Compliance Specialist for the Department of Transportation, happy to be here in front of you earlier in the day than the last meeting, and I think I was presenting on April 6th. What I'd like to do here is simply to give a brief overview of where we are now since that last meeting, and keep this matter fresh and keep it alive for any discussion you may wish to have, or any questions you may have of me, of the transition plan, or where we are, where we want to be going. One brief update is that I've met with a number of consultants, cannabis consultants, since the last meeting, which have led to some very good conversations, useful conversations, not only in terms of being able to clarify the county's position as the framework is in development, but also to hear some of their, their issues, their concerns, and try to address those concerns within the, the transition plan itself. To give you a brief overview of where we are with the plan, you know, in some ways, this may be a little bit redundant to what we had, I'd already presented to you back in April, but again, it's a chance for you to raise some questions earlier in the day rather than at, I believe, 6:00 PM, something like that the last time. So very briefly, the, the plan is coming together in a memorandum format, it's, has chapters and sections. The overall gist, of course, is the, the ability for us to issue licenses under Sequel law and underneath the EIR that was passed back in December. That being said, also, the new ordinance that was coming into effect January of this year. So sections included within that are, yes, some legal language in terms of Sequel guidelines, but also a section on resources and materials, outlining of what still needs to be developed, both for outreach purposes, but also for county staff to be able to navigate these complicated issues. Those resources and materials- Those resources and materials include fact sheets or flow charts or templates. Templates will be a big consideration as we move forward. Going further, it's, again, it's a CEQA streamlining strategy. How do we fit underneath the existing EIR, and how do we actually approve licenses as we move forward? The principal mechanism, again, to remind you, is the environmental checklist. It's an appendix C of the EIR itself. So I'm seeking to lay out in fairly detailed formats exactly how to use that checklist. That, again, will fold into the public relations and social media effort that Director Hunter just mentioned, but the plan itself is looking to lay out how that checklist should and could be used by an individual applicant, by a cannabis consultant, and by the county staff themselves. Part and parcel to that is an addenda. So if you go through the checklist once for your existing operation, it's how can you go through that checklist again if you wish to change your operation, if you wish to expand, for example? Right now, you have a certain designated area, you wish to modify everything, make it bigger, change the orientation, something. That likely will trigger the need to go through a second, a checklist a second time. So that will be yet again another section of the framework. Other considerations is in this section, and that is how we, as a county, relate to other state agencies, such as Fish and Wildlife, where there is a secret component to much of what Fish and Wildlife does. How are they and their actions relating to the county in our CEQA compliance? There's a question of ministerial permits, how those interact with the program, and by that I mean timber conversions under CAL FIRE, less than three acre conversions, grading permits, septic well permits, and building permits. All of those, to some degree or another, are considered to be ministerial. How do those then relate to people who want to develop their land and meet CEQA requirements? There is a section on unusual circumstances, which may include issues that were not addressed in the EIR, of course, but for unusual circumstances, there's also a section on cumulative impacts. If you have a cumulative impact, how, well, how can you possibly address that? What is the mechanism to move forward? Another consideration is the order of application and checklist processing. How is it if somebody has had their application in the department for a period of time, has not been approved? How are we going to handle those, either new applications or existing applications? That needs to be worked out in detail as well to make sure that the process is fair and equitable. I will speak to, just briefly, the idea of a timeline. So of course, it's been in public discussion, I believe, I believe in the last meeting on April 6th, the idea of SB 59, where state provisionals are, it's being negotiated, I suppose, in terms of a Senate bill, where provisional licensing under the states may, could possibly have passed as written, be granted through 2028. This, of course, changes the timeline of this year, July of this year, and then, of course, which also has a sunset of, I believe, January of 2020. So as that Senate bill is in development, being passed or not being passed, excuse me, we have to be very conscious of how the timeline of our transition plan and our urgency ordinance matches state requirements for provisional licensing or annual licensing as that plays out. To highlight again that the urgency ordinance that allows for extensions of licenses is expiring in September of this year, so that requires us to move fairly quickly, very quickly, I would say, in terms of the development of this three-pronged approach, the transition plan, the public relations or outreach effort, as well as the staffing. That timeline of the urgency ordinance is pressing, because I wish to remind the supervisors that this transition plan, we're looking to adopt it by resolution, which must necessarily go to the Planning Commission first. So there are some meeting schedules and noticing schedules that we need to be very conscious of. So I understand that many consultants probably have something to say in terms of the timeline and trying to expedite this effort, just trying to impress upon the supervisors that we're aware of that and looking to move as quickly as we can. So again, with my overall intent here, I'm giving you a brief overview in some parts of what you've heard before, but I'm happy to engage in any discussion or answer any questions you may have regarding any of these elements in the plan itself. So, thank you.
I believe SB 59 was, has already been amended not to the 2028. I'm trying to look at the date, but it has been shortened drastically, so July or 22nd.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm sorry to cut in. Yes, so I looked that up, and I know that it's in, being modified, and so I didn't need to misspeak. I was just told that perhaps this doesn't actually need to go to the Planning Commission, that this, the adoption of the transition plan can go directly to the supervisors without the Planning Commission approval.
We're still determining.
We're still determining that, I think is something to say, to slightly walk back from that comment.
So I want to make it clear for the people of Trinity that when we have the September date, or whenever the, September 1st is out when the UO is up? Okay. That magically there won't be 530 compliant, CEQA fully compliant. This is the date for basically this process to be ready to start going through. Is that, is that a fair analysis?
That is a fair analysis, yes. And if I get interseated for a moment, I did forget to mention, I know that many consultants are working on preparing their materials in terms of appendix C early, as in right now, they're looking to work through their client's application process and preparation for when we are ready to accept those checklists, whether that's before September or really at the deadline of September 5th, when the urgency ordinance is set to expire. And I just wish to take this moment to encourage consultants to continue to do that, to align themselves with what they know is going to come into effect with, by the fall, I guess I would say, at the latest.
So you feel you're still on target having that date, to have your work completed by that September date?
I would say that, yeah, that is our main effort. I think I expressed it in the April 6th meeting, that the framework itself is a fairly heavy lift in terms of writing it out and detailing it appropriately. I wish to have that put together as much as possible so that it's not an incomplete product when it actually hits the streets, say. The question of staffing, as well as public relations, of course, that hinges on the development of this plan to some degree, but I know that we are working with that timeframe of September very much in our minds.
And then I finally interpreted my note that I made for Kim. When you look at the applications you're doing, you know, two jobs a week you're trying to go through, do you have a decent amount of applications that are being come through? I mean, are we getting some traction there?
Yes, yes, it's been very successful. We, yes, we have quite a few. I will get some numbers of how many have come in, get those numbers together of what's come in. Are you interested in what's come in for the 30-day window that was expired or?
No, I was just curious what, I mean, all of California and probably all the United States right now has a real job. People in every business can't find employees, so I was curious if you're getting a reasonable amount of applications or?
Oh, applications, excuse me. Okay, for the positions. No, not very many.
Okay.
It matters on the position, but I think, yeah, countywide, especially with administrative positions, yes, having difficulty filling those positions and finding candidates.
What about the more technical positions?
Haven't got there yet with my interviews, but those have been a little better for us so far.
All right, thank you.
Kim, has there been any hiring at all?
No, our recruitments had to, they were slow. We had to extend some because of the lack of candidates, so we're starting interviews this week.
All right, thank you so much.
David, sorry, I have a quick question for you. Did you just clarify, because I heard Supervisor Crowe's question, and just a bit more clarity. So you're working through this amazing process, and I love it. Like, it just seems like you've got so much thought into all of the nooks and crannies of where there could be a problem, and I just appreciate all of that. I think Supervisor Crowe's question was, okay, so we come up to late August or early September, and there isn't going to just magically be this thing, but I think that what I heard you say was, you're going to be encouraging license holders to be taking some of these action steps while you're developing this, so that when we come to the end of the urgency ordinance, some of that's already in place, or did I misunderstand?
That is a, that's a fair summation of what I was trying to get to. So yes, I do encourage the consultants to move forward. I understand, to add more words to that, there's some risk involved. Say, if you're an applicant and you wish to develop your checklist, your environmental checklist, you need to do some biological studies, for example. You know, we don't have that template available for folks yet. We don't have the description of qualified professionals out there yet. So I understand that there is some gray area, I suppose, or it's a little bit of a vacuum, but regardless, I encourage if an applicant needs a biological study, that they pursue it now while we're in the floristic survey, meaning that botanical surveys are possible, while we're in the nesting bird season, where you can actually abide by the mitigations that are related to nesting birds. So that's what I'm trying to encourage folks to do it while it's in season. But again, I understand the risk where if you develop a report for us and then you're ready to submit it, that we're going to, well, I hope it's all in good shape. So I encourage them to do good work and in some ways anticipate what we wish and feel like there's enough information that's an industry standard that consultants will be able to do that. So yes, I encourage folks to move forward with what they're doing. I did speak to one section that I'm looking to develop, which, among other critical sections, I consider this to be very important, and that is the order of application and checklist processing, so understanding that when the urgency ordinance is set to expire, or if this framework is adopted before that, that we will have many applications or many environmental checklists that will be, you know, supplied to us, reports, plans, a lot of documentation, which I tried to speak to in my presentation on April 6th about just the volume of material. So understanding how the county will approach processing that material based off of when it was submitted, and there's a number of different approaches you could take there in terms of making it fair and equitable, but that is also a component of the plan itself. So if we have a lot of documentation from a lot of applicants to work through, we need to be able to be very strategic about how we stage our approach in terms of processing. Is that more clear?
It is, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Any public comment?
You have a member of the public that you've not seen.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Wirth.
Oh, okay. I wanted to talk about beneficial use of water that is part of the planning process, and going forward with urgency ordinance, I'm sure you want to know about that. This county has permission to use beneficial use of water from the dam on down, all the way downtown, whole county. We've got 50,000 acre feet that we share, that we need to demonstrate we share with uses downriver. You think about the logging days and all the roads out there, the water trucks were used all the time, you know, to water down the road to keep it from dusting and all that, and for, and I also think of the Caltrans jobs that took the water a lot for building the highways. That shows beneficial use of the water that our county needs. And if we ever need to show that we have usages of this water that are very commercially needed, we need to allow that use to be, go forward. And that's what the intent was, to allow this county to use up to 50,000, or to share up to 50,000 acre feet downriver from the dam. And if we do have those benefits, we will ultimately be able to demonstrate that it's of value to us, and if other places take the water over the mountain and other places, they will have to demonstrate that they are willing to pay for it. If we ever want to get paid for all this water we're losing, we need to demonstrate that we need it. So I think it's very appropriate to allow what's not a lot of water use, but allow an industry of, let's say, some environmentally cool trucks that can help us in firefighting, can help us with road construction, can help us with our commercial needs, and it's all staying within our basin, so the water is used in this Trinity Basin and not going out of the basin, which becomes a whole nother can of worms. But for them to take the water out of basin, it's expensive to us, and we need to demonstrate that. We need to allow this usage. I mean, Jeremy's thought about water usage, he says, downriver also, and I know Keith needs water for everything that goes on up that area too. It's very appropriate to have that industry used in a decent way. And I think we should slap off and allow the emergency use of the water trucks, especially if a well is dry. That means somebody is compromised completely, you know, residential or whatever the needs, and you can't even fight fire if you don't have the water. So just wanted to add that into the analysis of, as we're planning going ahead. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I don't know, is there any additional public comments?
Yes, Anna Wright.
Thank you. I'm on Zoom. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to David Kolbeck and Director Hunter for their presentation, for the update on how many extensions we have issued, as well as where the transition plan stays, stands, excuse me. I was one of those consultants that chatted with David, and there's a lot of good things, I think, coming from this transition plan. One thing, though, the board, I believe, should consider at this point, now that we're in early May and the state of that is where it's at, the government code that the urgency ordinance was based on, is based on Government Code Section 25123. It allows for a total of a one-year period for this urgency ordinance. At this point, as you all know, it expires in early September, which is right before harvest for everyone in the, in the community. So one thing to consider, not really knowing whether a transition plan will be into effect or not by that deadline, is for the board to think about agendizing an extension to this urgency ordinance and utilizing what this government code gives in regards to timelines to the full amount, which would be one year. That extension would take it from September to December and give what I believe is much needed time to the Planning Department to do a good job this first time around, so we don't have to go back and fix things, do a thorough job, make sure every single part of the FEIR is being considered, as well as all the other considerations that David just talked about. But to make sure this is a tight, tight plan at the first initial implementation of it, as well as, of course, waiting to make sure staffing is going to be a part of it. I know that's a big question I just heard about as well. As an employer in Trinity County, I understand the difficulties in finding, finding people to fit these positions that need the appropriate environmental backgrounds, educations, and so forth. So I appreciate, again, what everyone's doing. I know myself in the Planning Department, probably twice a week at this point, progress is being made slowly but surely, and so I do thank all the staff that are still there for that. Then I also want to then thank you, supervisors, for understanding that we do have an opportunity to extend the urgency ordinance to that year mark, and I believe this is a really important time to consider that, to be able to give the departments the max amount of time they need, again, to have a solid plan that will fit with the FEIR, and that will be right the first time. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments. I don't know, anybody else on Zoom?
I have no one else on Zoom.
Anybody else? Anybody else here wishing to make public comments? All right. I don't believe we need a motion on this, so thank you for your time, appreciate it. Next, we will go into Trinity County Board of Peopleization. Item 6.4, continued deliberations of assessment of appeal number 2019-01 from Diane Richards and Diane DePoole for APN number 0173300900. No fiscal impact. And the contact is? Richard.
At this point, the board has the choice. If we want to continue to deliberate, we can actually go to closed session and continue to deliberate and come out with the decision, or the board can just announce the decision. As I know we had a presentation last time, Shannon is not in the area. She's by phone if we have any questions. At this point, it's the board's pleasure, how you'd like to proceed.
All right, well, unless there's any objections, I would like to proceed into closed session.
My understanding of where we were after the last meeting is that we would be presented a letter by County Council that we would then vote over. Is that where we were at?
Yeah, we were, we were supposed to have some findings that we could plug over and vote on. I think my understanding was a letter, and it gets delivered in two weeks. We're only looking over prior to that.
She, there are some findings that are drafted, but they haven't been, I don't believe, forwarded to you, obviously.
My understanding is that we just wanted to make sure that she captured what our thoughts were.
Yeah, I agree.
Before we issued it out, so that's, I don't need to deliberate anymore until I see that letter personally.
Yeah, I don't either. But I think Keith, our board, it was two weeks when we get our letter, the letter goes.
When she said that, I thought it was going to be this meeting.
Okay.
I can't remember a time date, but in my head, that's what it was. I don't know exactly. Just because it's in my head doesn't mean it was true.
So we'll still wait for that and go from there?
I'm just checking with her right now if I can.
Okay.
Is that supposed to, make sure that they're finalized, or present you something that's in print?
Well, I'm going to go ahead and just adjourn the meeting for until 10, or sorry, until 12 o'clock. And while we figure that one out, and then we will be coming back in to closed session also, so. Does anyone mind if I go ahead and do that? All right, we will resume at 12 o'clock. Thank you.
Hi.
Howdy.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't question any time she tells me these things, because every time I called her on it, she pulls up some magical thing that I go, uh.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't recall.
All right, back, welcome back. We were at item 6.4, and we were waiting to hear some information.
Yes, so we're ready to go into deliberations into closed session.
Okay, so with that, we will be going into closed session for item 6.4, as well as for item 7.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Number of Cases Two. Item 7.2, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Number of Cases One. Trinity Institute for Permaculture Farming and Restorative Forestry, LLC versus County Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 21CV017.
Good noon, Mr. Chair, members of board. I have to comment, that is the smoothest I've ever heard anybody say Trinity Institute for Permaculture Farming and Restorative Forestry. Without, you know, tipping the hand, I do want to thank the board for apparently giving direction last closed session to engage, not just with me and my client, but the other attorneys in, embroiled in lawsuits with the county. I think our, or, in head to log, I guess you would call it, five parties for plaintiffs and the county had what I consider a very productive conversation. Your counsel can tell you their own perspective about it. For me, it just seemed like a good opportunity to get to the heart of some of the issues. And, you know, as expected, most of us realize, there's not a lot of daylight between these positions. Litigation is not the best way to ferret out that conversation, it is. So I do appreciate that, our conversations are ongoing. We're not, we're not strumming the guitar yet around the campfire, but I think we have made some progress, and I hope that can continue. I'm encouraged that we might actually see the county's time and resources freed up to focus on things like transition and licensing rather than defense. So anyway, that's my own perspective. We've got parallel tracks, too. You know, if everything falls down, there's motions and there's stuff. But I think we've got a nice little window here, and I look forward to continuing it. I hope whatever direction is needed from the board to continue these conversations is there. And I hope the next time I'm addressing a closed session, we're talking about maybe some resolution. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Emma, any additional public comment on Zoom?
Is there anyone else with public comment?
All right, thank you so much for joining us today.